Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Franklin Board of Education meeting for November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Meeting has been properly posted. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mrs. Yank.
Here.
Doctor, Mr. Sprague.
Here.
Doctor Beer.
Here.
Mrs. Sapursky.
Here.
Doctor Khan is excused.
Thank you.
Oh, I am so sorry.
Linda's here.
Ms. Sapursky, are you here?
I am here, all right, right next to you.
Perfect.
I know you can see me.
I told you my contacts were not right today.
All right, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Watkowski, seconded by Mrs. Yank. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Friends of Franklin recognition, Mr. Young, Mr. Daniels, please come up. While they're walking up here, I just talked to Jerry beforehand, and he said, boy, it's a lot different than the meeting we had
May twenty-fourth.
In May twenty-fourth, thank you, of twenty-three. There had been some issues with with the flag and how it was presented at times, and Mr. Young had sent an email and talked with administration, talked with the board, and we're really proud of the way that it's been handled. Mr. Daniels has gotten the protocols straightened out. There aren't any issues anymore. And, but that's not it. The learning process is more than that, and he set up something that year in November of twenty-three where the Pleasant View third graders would, would have a class about the flag. That was set up by Mr. Daniels and Mr. Young. And, and now it's expanded to all the elementary schools in the district, and it's a good civics lesson for us all. And it's a win for everyone, and it's the way communities should work, and it's the way schools should work. So, thanks very much. We really appreciate it, and Mr. Daniels, please.
Yeah, so really, it's an honor to be able to be here tonight and present this for Jerry. As we all know, Jerry has a really strong passion for the flag. It's something that we learn about each other, actually, because I share that passion. But last year, we piloted a U.S. Flags for Kids program at Pleasant View through some engagement with staff that were present for that. We, I feel we enhanced it, so we ended up bringing that forth to all the elementary schools this year. So all five elementaries and all five elementary's third graders got to see that program. It's a very engaging program, a lot of questions and answers. It's followed by a demonstration of how we properly lower and raise the flag. We incorporated our Buildings and Grounds team, discussions with Jerry and I. We, we might not carry that program forward forever, but we hope that it's a legacy we leave for the Buildings and Grounds team. So, just an honor to co-develop that with Jerry. He's been absolutely influential and, I can't say the word, definitely influential in developing that program. And he leads that program, so thank you, Jerry.
I will say, as I said to Mr. Sprague, that I am certainly glad to be here tonight, and it's under a lot better conditions than it was on May twenty-fourth of two thousand and twenty-three. We had, we had no respect for the flag at that point, and I couldn't get answers from anybody at the school staff or the principals, and I felt that I needed to bring my concerns to the board. You listened that night. Nobody cut me off at my three-minute, three-minute allotted time, and I said my piece, and it just steamrolled from there forward. The next morning, I had a phone call from the school grounds. I'd never met Andy before. I was privileged to meet him then. And we said, we gotta fix it and make it better, and that's what we did. We worked together, and a community member that is not afraid to say something when it's broken. I've spent my whole life saying that if something's broken, you can't just complain. You have to come forward with a, with a resolution on how to fix it and make it better, and I'm just so proud to be able to do this. I'm retired. I have some time. I have some two grandkids that are in Pleasant View and a third one that's nine months still at home. That's gonna go through the system, and the one's been through the program already, the first year in two thousand and twenty-three, Ava. And Kylie will see it next year. She's in second grade, so it's amazing working with these third graders. At times, you think that they were told to study about the flag before we got there, because it's, it's amazing. They know that Neil Armstrong put the flag on the moon, and, and they know things about the flag. They know what the stars and what the stripes mean. They know the colors. It's, it's amazing, and I was just astounded to see some of these third graders that come up with some of the answers as we're going through our program, that they actually do know something about the flag, and it's, it's just an enhancement on their education to get, to get a really good knowledge of everything that's involved on, on that flag and what it stands for, what it represents. I'm truly proud to be involved in this project.
So Ava, you got to go through the program. Is there anything you want to add? I think it's really neat, Kylie and Ava, that you get to be here and you get to see your grandpa being such a great role model for the school district and for all of us, so that's been really fun. I was able to go to the first ceremonies last year at Pleasant View, and I could just say, like, the partnership is neat, and I appreciate that Andy's also then incorporated our head custodians at each of the buildings, so that, like, the tradition carries on, just like you said. Or if there's a moment where one of those two aren't there, like, it's still going to continue, and that patriotism is really important. So it's been heartwarming to watch the connections, and I appreciate that you were patient with us as we work to get better. And thank you, girls, for being here tonight. It's your first board meeting.
Welcome.
Good job, girls.
Can I just ask one thing?
Sure.
You know, we do have Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts in all of our grade schools, and as, as a parent involved with those programs in the past, I know that that's part of their program, and maybe as a way to keep this, sustain this going forward, if you were to connect up with them and maybe involve them, that will help keep it going when you're not.
So, so the word is out on the program. We're getting other people that want to be involved. I haven't talked to you yet about that, but we are having other people kind of reach out and ask how they can be involved in that program as well. And we do actually celebrate the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts in the program now. That was something we implemented this year, but I think that's a really good idea.
We definitely want to keep this moving forward, and like I say, it's, 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 it's snowballing, and the people that actually see the program and the teachers and the principals that come and listen to it are just amazed at the involvement and the preparedness that we have and what we present to these thirty, third graders. I think we got it set to their, their level where they can understand it, and the communication just freely flows back and forth from the third grade to what we're gonna present, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have some because we do have a plaque. And I think there's some bags for the girls this month.
Yes.
Get ready to smile.
You should definitely be in it, too. There you go.
Right in front. Come up in front. Ready?
There they go.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yay.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Young.
All right, I didn't see any, anybody signed up for community comment. Does anybody want to comment? All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I'm not sure who made the motion.
Mrs. Yank.
Mrs. Yank. And Debbie seconded. All right, great. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. School board calendar, regular board of education meeting Wednesday, December eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, at the ECC at six, and also Wednesday, January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, at the EC at six. District administrator update, Mrs. Bennen, please.
All right, I know they just left, but thank you to Mr. Young and her, his granddaughters and Mr. Daniels for being here for our friend of Franklin tonight. And remember, we have the nomination form on the website, so please continue to nominate. Great community connections that we have. This past Monday, we celebrated Veterans Day across the district. It looked a little different in every building, every principal and their team at autonomy. What was neat is a lot of them included their engagement teams to think about how to engage students and staff. And on social media, we pushed out some information, too, about Robin Wood, who had some veterans in, included their Boy Scouts and some flag routines, had the recorders playing, a couple of kids on recorder playing taps, and it was a really nice ceremony, kind of something that came back that had gone away, you know, around two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, and it's back. So it was nice to see celebrations and, and to thank our veterans across the city of Franklin and the entire nation. Last Saturday also, our Franklin High School Construction Two celebrated their pre-drywall event, so this is one of three events that happens each year at the build. This year, it's out at Cape Crossing subdivision. Anne was there, so thank you for representing the board, and we were able to get a few pictures and hear a few words from Tim O'Brien-Homes and Andrew Menti as they lead that program. Tomorrow is the opening night for Almost Maine, our, our high school fall play, so hopefully you're getting tickets, getting your neighbors and friends out there. The students are definitely excited and have been working hard, along with our staff of directors. Another exciting thing that we've had happen, this was about last week, Monday, our FHS Automotive Tech Program had fourteen students pass the ASE certification. So this is a big deal for a few reasons, and included male and female students, which has been different for us. Fourteen is the highest number we've had and the highest passer rate. From there, if you have highest scores among schools that are invited to take this, you can go to the state competition. They only take, I'm guessing it's around thirty teams, but I could be off on that. But not every school has that opportunity, so having that many students taking it, a couple of students scoring near the highest scores, we're looking to hopefully have representation again. Last year, we had placed at that event, so thank you to Alex Bondar, our autos teacher, for getting these experiences for our students and having them prepared. They took the assessment on a Monday, which is also impressive, because that's always difficult. Community Education and Recreation Winter Guide is right around the corner, so the community opens up for registering on December third. And at Franklin High School, another exciting moment for them, they have made the AP Honor Roll List. Last year, we were silver. We moved to gold this year. That exemplifies not only the amount of students taking the AP exam, but also the score that they're obtaining, being a three or higher. So very proud of our educators to get these, and our student services staff to make students aware of the courses, educators preparing them, and of course, the kids working hard. It's not an easy caseload, and often, these students are in multiple courses, potentially taking multiple exams. Another celebration coming up, or an opportunity, I should say, is December eleventh. One of our Saber Center events of the year is coming up is the founding, a Celtic Christmas, so tickets are on sale from that. Again, that's part of that community series that we've been starting to try to boost up through the Saber Center, so look for tickets for that event. And there are a plethora of events coming up at the Saber Center. As we know, it's becoming the holiday season, so all of our choir, band, orchestra groups have concerts coming up in the next few weeks. And that's all for now. Any questions? Let me know.
Thank you. Reports, presentations, and other board business. City of Waukesha and District Fiber Infrastructure MOU is an action item. Ms. Linsky, please, but I'm looking for a motion to, I'm looking for a motion.
I move to formally approve the City of Waukesha and District Fiber Infrastructure MOU.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Larson, seconded by Mrs. Sapursky. Do we have any discussion, or, Ms. Linsky, do you have anything that?
Nothing to add since last time, unless there's any questions.
Just one quick question. The, the, whatever you call this report, says there is no financial implication at this time. What would trigger a financial implication?
Because the fiber is owned by the City of Waukesha, I don't see any future implications ever for anything financial.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, motion was made, made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. At-Risk Report, Mr. Ackman, please.
Good evening. So, we're here to present to the board the annual At-Risk Report, and the purpose of the At-Risk Report is to provide an update to the board on the number of students identified as at-risk of not graduating from high school. The criteria for determining at-risk is in state statute. That's included in the report. So, in general, the report covers updated data regarding the at-risk metrics and also the connection to the new coherence plan. In addition, there's key action steps that we're taking to address at-risk. And, you know, we're here to talk about that a little bit. What's different this time is that at-risk is included in the coherence plan, and so the report looks different than it has in the past. So, in the past, we really just looked at at-risk through the statute, and now we do have the, the connection to the coherence plan. So our, our at-risk numbers are included in the report. In general, the majority of our at-risk identify, our students identified as at-risk of not graduating are due to their assessment scores, credit attainment, or truancy. And what looks different in the report, just to be a little more specific, is that it's broken out by grades. You can see the number, fifth through twelfth grade. We've also added a, the CRC, the Community Reintegration Center, numbers, and identified all the students, made a decision to identify all the students at the CRC as at-risk. Included, past that, are action steps that are taken at each level to have an impact on our students at risk, so making sure that we mitigate those numbers and that it looks different by the end of the year. And we're here to take questions.
How, how often will, how often will those numbers be updated in the coherence plan documents? I mean, since that's kind of a living document, do we know, is it a, is it a spreadsheet that is continuous? Obviously, it's not gonna be updated daily, but is it, how often is it updated?
My understanding is that the numbers are gonna be pulled twice a year.
That's one change from last time, so our numbers got a little bit confusing, because we kind of did rolling numbers. We're gonna take a hard count at third Friday in September, so you hear us say third Friday. We're gonna take a hard count at second Friday in January. Kids and, and people say, what if kids come after that? They'll get sucked up the next time you pull, or you're chasing that forever, especially at CRC. So that's one thing Mr. Ackman said is different. That's different. We used to kind of have, add to that as rolling numbers. It doesn't mean we're gonna ignore a kid until it comes time to pull the data, but the coherence plan metric will be pulled twice a year. That ends up being summer and March. It translates to by the time credits and everything get posted, so, or first semester, second semester, if you're thinking about it like that, start of year, end of year, right the, the middle.
And this would be the new baseline? My understanding is this year will be the baseline for the coherence plan.
Linda, please.
So then, the measure really is percent of students. That's your, that's what you're trying to.
That is the coherence plan metric, yes.
And so, and where's the cutoff as far as, because coherence, coherence plan has meets expectations, you know, that rating, so.
So that'll be shared in December. This will be the baseline, so our baseline is four percent. I'm anticipating it would be to score a five is under five percent, to score a four is under four percent, so you kind of take that. Look at state averages, look when we, but that will be shared in December. That's what we had to establish with this. We've never pulled the data like this before. So that's our new baseline for coherence plan.
Please, please.
So, we have one hundred and twenty-three now, then, students at risk, correct? And last year, at this time, we had one hundred and twenty-three also? Am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
So is, will we expect it to go down, though, or are we always, I mean, is that part of what our, our action plans are? Is that we wouldn't start out with one twenty-three? I know we make great progress by the end of the year, but we start the year always at, got two years at one twenty-three. We haven't changed.
I'm not sure what you're asking. I think it's probably coincidence that it's the exact same number. The data's pulled slightly differently this time, but you're right. If you're saying, was there a big reduction in at-risk from last year to this year? No, these numbers would indicate no.
And two, one thing to add, we added fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth grade this year. Compared to last year, we just did ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth. So then, this year, it'd be including that fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, so our numbers end up somehow adding up to the same, which we just looked at the ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth last year.
But our goal is to reduce the number, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Which we've had a lot of success with in the past years, and it does seem like we've, it does seem like we're doing a lot more, we're doing a lot more intervention early rather than, rather than getting to them at the beginning of the year and.
Some of that's reflected in the numbers, too, right? If you look at just nine, twelve now, I think we're at about eighty-one in my quick math, and if we look at where we're at last year for nine, twelve, it was about closer to that number that you were giving, window of like one twenty, in the one twenties.
Tenth, eleventh, twelfth have all gone down.
Please, Andrew.
Can you just clarify on, you were saying we pulled the data differently this year. Can you just give me a thumbnail of what exactly is different?
I can tell you thumbnail one, we're only pulling at those two dates. Two, one change we made is, so the state changed the benchmark criteria for ACT. So we went back in and adjusted all, for, excuse me, not how you score the ACT, but what the state considers as proficient. Let me finish that sentence. So, College Board and ACT have a set of what they consider as proficient, and then each state, because it's our state assessment, like for school report card, determines what's proficient. So those cut scores changed. We went and redid, so that changed all the academic numbers. We use pre, pre-ACT, ACT Forward Exam for those who are the lowest-scoring kids, if you're academically at-risk. So that's different. The number is different from what you cut to say, would that count as at-risk or what it wouldn't?
Okay.
The number is, is different, just to be fully, we didn't make that up. The state changed, and we decided we're gonna redo for the new baseline with the new state cuts.
What did they change from, too?
ELA went up by a number, and science and math went down, so it's easier to be profi, I, I can't explain why or how, but ELA went up by one point, and science and math went down by one point. The state calculates ELA a little bit different than College Board. They split it into, I mean, I, I don't know. I, I can't answer, but yes, so.
Okay.
Cut scores also changed for Ford Exam, so we'll be talking about that with state report cards, so they re-scale score out everybody in the Forward Exam. So what it means to be, they used to call it below basic, now they call it developing, but in that four-tiered system, the lowest tier, what constitutes that lowest tier is a different cut number. So those are different. I think we are always pulling credits the same way. We've never actually published it, right? And, and done, like, here is what we are committing to as a metric. This is how we'll pull it every time it's set up to automatically update twice a year. So you put the data in, and it's, I, I would say prior to that, it was gathering lots of different spreadsheets and compiling. We spent a lot of time this year working with Mark Grunske on getting all those set up to automate a little bit more. We can also sort by type of student, who's at-risk, students with IEPs versus students who receive free lunch, to students who, students of color, right? There's a whole different way that we can continue to look at that data, so that would be different, not new data. I don't know if I'm missing, but without going too far in the weeds on cut scores, there, that was the most of the change.
Linda, please.
And I think, remembering from previous discussion, attendance is a kind of a bigger part of this. Obviously, it impacts performance if we're not there. So, can you tell us if that's better? And I know we have another coherence measurement on attendance. Are they connected at all, or are you involved in that? I don't know who, who's focused on attendance in terms of the coherence plan, but that's not you? Or is it a bigger group, or?
Well, attendance is a big focus of the impactful steps that are included in the plan, so that's covered in terms of what that process looks like, those attendance meetings and following our policy, and also following what's in statute in terms of attendance. So that's one element for at-risk identification, would be habitual truancy. I think what you're referring to as far as the coherence plan, we're under engagement, we have attendance. That metric, my understanding, is chronic absenteeism. So chronic absenteeism is a different than habitual truancy. These are defined by the state, but chronic absenteeism means that, that includes excused and unexcused absences. So it looks at students who are missing school, whether it's excused for valid reasons, or if it's, there's, it's an unexcused absent. So under ninety percent is the threshold for being identified as chronically absent.
Regardless of self-excused or unexcused?
Correct.
And truancy is more unexcused?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, anybody else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar, Ms. Lankur, please.
So, hard to believe that we are already thinking about twenty-five, twenty-six, but this is the traditional time of year that we are building a draft of the calendar to present to the board. We did things a little bit differently this year in that we collaborated with the certified group of the Better Place to Work Team, just so that they could give feedback on the pacing of the semesters, when PD days would make sense, and we got all that feedback. Ultimately, from that group and the different discussion that we had, we built three separate calendar versions, and we sent a survey to all of our staff members to give them the opportunity to say, this is my preference of what's calendar we think would work best. And then ultimately, they, in terms of scoring, came, this calendar that's being presented to you came back as the highest preferred calendar for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, so happy to answer any questions.
Linda, please.
I mean, it does have that, the big winter break, two weeks. Is this the first time we, we had that length of time?
In the time that I've been working on the calendar, yes, but I can tell you in talking with other districts, this seems to be the trend just with the pacing of the holidays, that a lot of districts will be doing in twenty-five, twenty-six.
So maybe something unique to this calendar year?
I think it's unique with the way that the holidays fall. It didn't quite make sense to have students come for one day and then have a break, or then come back for one day before, like, on a Friday, and then return.
Okay.
Yeah, please.
And then generally, spring break, we target end of March, not tied to any holidays or Easter or anything like that?
Yeah, we actually work with local area districts to try and align our spring breaks, so that, obviously, it's difficult. If we are having our spring break, another district is not, so that if student, or teachers in other districts have kids in different districts, it just, we do our best to align with local districts, so that everybody kind of has off at the same time. But yes, we usually target the last week of March or around that area.
And this year, you were able to tie in Easter, so I gave you a couple of extra days to.
Yeah.
It's our way now.
To work with.
Christmas. Okay, thank you.
Anne, please.
Is there any chance that with the upcoming construction, our timeframe, like, calendar will have to change, starting early, starting late? Any of that kind of thing?
Yeah, we started talking about that, actually, because we were looking at, we'd like to get on a cycle of approving two calendars at a time to be two years out, which is kind of more a norm that I've seen, but we didn't this time around, because there's a chance that we might have to apply to the state to start later or earlier at some point through the projects that are going on for the next four years. So those meetings are starting to take place, and we'll have a better idea moving forward, but yeah, that could impact the following year.
So we could approve this and then have to adjust?
It won't adjust this calendar at all. This one, we're fine. Yep, the first part of construction is not scheduled till October, so it won't affect this calendar or end date, but moving forward the following year, potentially, and that's the deeper work we're gonna get into.
I'll just add the one component. Typically, when the schedule's adjusted, isn't for new construction, so, starting on the far north, it's brand-new. You can build that without disrupting education. When education gets disrupted on the interior of the building and there's remodeling or rebuilding of existing space, that's when the calendar has to be adjusted, because you just need a longer time to make sure you get all those components done. So that's really the second part, once the fieldhouse area is up and, up and running.
Thank you. Mary, please.
I have to plan my life very far in advance. Do we know what day graduation is?
We are close to closing in on that. Mike Polo and I have had conversations with the. with, uh, the American Family Field, so they have their schedule, so we should have that hopefully before Thanksgiving, and that's about in time with the same timeframe that we've had in the past.
Anyone else?
I, I just say thank you for listening to staff and, you know, offering them the chance for feedback, I think that was really helpful and really nice kind of change.
All right, uh, anyone else? Thank you. Uh, theater pathway, teacher pathway, new courses.
So Amanda did a nice job of going over these courses and these new pathways and the additions, uh, for next year, so really tonight, we're just looking for approval. And again, that was looking at the second course and the teacher pathway going into the second year next year, this being the first, and then also the approval of the first course for the theater pathway that would begin in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So it'd be two separate approvals.
I motion to approve the pre-AP Theater Arts Course for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Second.
Uh, motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Yank. Uh, any, uh, discussion?
Does the, uh, teacher who's going to teach that class need a special license?
For theater, they do, so that's something that we've been working on with Laura and HR, and, uh, there's not a lot of them in the state, so we know we'll have a challenge ahead of us, but it's some creative thinking we've been doing.
All right, anyone else? All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor. Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
I motion to approve the homeschool and culture course as part of the teacher pathway for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Second.
Motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Sapursky, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion carries, thank you. Uh, school board liaison reports.
Um, I sat in on the SWSA meeting on Tuesday, I sent the slides to you all probably thirty-five minutes ago, and I highlighted the slides that, um, they had a nice sort of summary of internal Wisconsin, uh, results on the election in terms of what it's meeting for a lot of new faces on some of the committees of interest for schools, the, um, Public Finance Committee and the Education Committee, and then also just, um, encouragement, um, that for all of us who do have new legislative, uh, representatives to sort of begin slowly rather than meeting them with, with an initial ask, to meet them just on a getting-to-know-you basis first. And then some drafts of the legislative, um, white sheets are included in the slide deck as well. I think those are about ready to be finalized, so they'll be a, a good tool for having those later conversations.
And I did, um, um, as you all know, uh, uh, Representative Whitkey, um, was at our, uh, key communicators meeting, um, so I'll continue to reach out to him, and I thought we had a good first meeting. Um, and, um, Senator Bradley reached out to me, um, obviously he's not in our district anymore, at least for the most part, um, if he is at all. But, um, I tried to re, uh, get ahold of Senator Wongard through him and, and, uh, Mr. Bradley, um, said, if we need anything, please continue to talk to him as well, so I'm, we'll advocate with both of those and continue to move forward.
Any else, board liaison reports? I did go to the, uh, assembly at Countrydale. It's, uh, it's always fun to see the energy of those kids, so. All right, school and community engagement reports.
I will give a shout out to Anne for running, uh, a very successful craft fair. She was partnered, partnered with a couple of other folks, but she was instrumental in, in just making sure this was probably our most successful craft fair yet. We got tons of compliments from attendees and vendors, so yay us.
Good job.
Right.
Thinking back on, on that, um, I mean, it only kind of took a couple of my thunders here, but the two things this weekend, um, I was really proud to attend both the construction house, um, open house and craft fair. And in both cases, um, specifically for the students I interacted with, uh, the construction house is really fun to ask the kids, you know, like, what's, what's been your favorite thing so far? And hear, you know, oh, I really liked the framing, like, we built this wall, we put it up, and now this house is standing here. This one student was just like, can you believe it? I mean, we built that wall, it just was really, to see that, like, learning and that pride. Um, and another one who said, I don't think I've had my favorite yet, I really want to do the flooring, and we haven't gotten to that, and so I'm like, I'm excited about that, so just to hear how, and how grateful they are and, and their families who are with them at the open house, um, for the opportunity for the kids to learn in this way and have these opportunities to the future. So that was really exciting, um, proud to be a part of that. And then as Mary said, the craft fair, um, was really, you know, it's always fun to have community members come into a building that they've never been in before, like, wow, these are, you know, the school buildings in Franklin, like, this is really nice. But my favorite part was actually, um, I was working at the raffle table, I saw a lot of people as they were leaving, and the community members who wanted to tell me that the students who were selling, because we had our woods, um, students and our metals students selling their, um, Saber Manufacturing items or whatever, um, how professional they were and how, you know, they, you know, their product was so great and how they were, you know, just really engaging to talk to and excited about their work. And so again, just that focus on our students and all the amazing things that they're able to do, um, was just, it was a real point of pride this weekend for, for Franklin, so.
And the vol- student volunteers got some very specific shout-outs too, just, they seemed, um, so energetic and in, what we genuinely wanted to help, because these vendors come in and they got, you know, they need dollies and things set up and whatever, and they were so complimentary of the students, it was just heartwarming.
All right, anyone?
Was it middle school or at high school?
It was at the middle school.
Middle school, okay.
Anybody else?
I remember working the, yeah, walk there tomorrow.
Oh, nice. Pleasant, is it Pleasant View?
Pleasant View, yeah.
That's always fun.
Yeah. Favorite things, kids and boys.
Middle school wrestling tournament is this Saturday.
Oh, that's. And your sons are still cooking?
The coaches, yeah.
Are you running concession?
I am cooking.
Okay.
Well, I've never seen a wrestling.
Well, I should mention, so the weekend before last, we had the, the Saber Showdown, the dance competition that had over seventy-five teams, this was run through the middle school. Um, and I got to work in the concession stand, and I had never personally had a walking taco, but, uh.
Really? Your whole life?
Never in my whole life, uh, but they were quite popular, and so I tried one, and I can see what the hype is about.
Oh, my gosh, you've been missing out.
Can I just add one more thing as far as.
Please.
Events at the middle school, because there's, no, it is event, there's a lot of space there, can we somewhere on the website, like, know what's going on there? We know what's going on at Saber Center, but we don't know what's going on at the, that space, and there is obviously some community, like that big dance thing and just to kind of know what's going on, if that's possible.
A good idea.
Is that on the calendar?
All right, uh, future agenda items, Pleasant View School Presentation, Friends of Franklin, Coherence Plan Midyear Report, Board Clerks Report, Election Notice, Open Enrollment Seats, Twenty-five, twenty-six School Calendar, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four Financial Audit Report, Annual Health Report, Ben Franklin School Presentation, Review and Discussion of WASB Proposed Resolutions, Twenty-five, twenty-six Preliminary Budget at a Glance, District Administrator Self-Evaluation of Goals Midyear Close Session. Motion, um.
Did we ever find out how that referendum went?
Voted for a purple, so that's good. Good for the community.
Do we ever decide what we're going to do as a board as far as goals and going back to that?
I thought we were. I thought there was consensus on, I don't know if we can even, I don't know if we're supposed to talk about this or not. Maybe something we can, uh, put on the agenda for next meeting to make sure that we have that buttoned up.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Larson, seconded by Mrs. Wkowsky, all in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion carries, we are adjourned at six thirty-nine, thank you.
You've never had a walking taco?
I've never had a walking taco.
Well, that's.